Now, Lieutenant Lieutenant Guahan is called to order. Can I ask Senator Yamashita if you can lead us in prayer?
Dear Lord, as we heed our compa- our deliverance on this matter, help us to remember the dedication, sacrifice, and focus of your that our leadership exemplifies in all of this, as the day-to-day thankless trial for building service, all around us throughout the past. Sometimes it's difficult to speak about ourselves, not performance, but we are deserving of it, our leadership is deserving of it. But dear Lord, let us remember that without that service, without that focus, that dedication, we wouldn't have belonged to these words today. And so we ask that you give us the intelligence, the compassion to discuss and come to the right decision, Lord, the leadership who has the work of our Father.
All right, yes. Hello, good evening. Thank you. And we have a high representative here. The President's here. I just made you go to the President's office. I think it's private. I appreciate you.
Dear Lord, we thank you. Thank you for those wonderful seasons, and we look forward to celebrating our new presidency. Amen. Amen.
Thank you very much, Senator. I would like to ask Senator Munia Barnes if she can lead us in the recitation of In Fresi.
In Fresi. (speaking Spanish).
And Senator Morrison, if he can lead us in singing the Guam hymn in Chamor, and Senator Duñez, if he can lead us in the singing of the National Anthem.
Oh, see, can't you see, I am utterly blind, and what so proudly we hail at the twilight's last seen, with stars and bright stars through the perilous fight, oh, the grandeur be watched, where so gallantly stream, and the rock is breakin', the loughers sink in there, gave proof through the night that our life was still there. Oh, see, does that starstrangled banner yet wave, for the land of the green and the home of the brave?
Thank you very much, Senators. The clerk, please take your call. One second. Can I send to you, Speaker, on the adoption of the agenda?
Yeah, thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that we adopt this agenda, headlined 2014 Eighth Special Session.
Before we do that, let me just confirm at least that we have a quorum. It's just for record purposes. Of course, this is an adoption of the agenda, so can you? So the clerk, can you?
Senator Tom Adda. Senator Tony Adda.
Good morning, President.
Senator Uggins.
Good morning.
Vice Speaker Cruz.
Good morning.
Senator Duñez.
Good morning.
Senator Lim Tiaco.
President.
Senator McCready.
Here.
Senator Morrison.
President.
Senator Munia Barnes.
Minister's business, thank you.
Senator Resfischo.
Here.
Senator Rodriguez. Senator Siniklas. Speaker Juan Pat.
Thank you.
Senator Yamashita. Madam Speaker, there is a quorum.
Thank you very much. So Senator Resfischo.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to excuse those senators not present for this special session.
On that motion, hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, I renew my motion that we adopt this agenda, headlined 2014 Eighth Special Session.
On that motion, hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that we approve the Legislative Journal dated July 7th, 8th, 9th, and 9th, 2014, Seventh Special Session.
On the motion, no objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, I move that we waive the communications and petitions, given that this is a special session.
Objections. No objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, there is a message from Imagallah in Guam. It's dated November 20, 2014. It's addressed to you, and it's the genesis to which the Acting Governor of Guam called us into this special session. I move that this be penned into the Day Session Journal.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, I move that we waive Items 10 and 11 of this special session.
No objections, so ordered.
And I also move that we waive Item 12 on the introduction and first reading of bills and resolutions.
No objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, my first motion, we also have a bill that was introduced at the request of the Magallah in Guam, the Governor of Guam, in accordance with the Organic Act of Guam. My first motion, this bill was introduced but labeled Bill Number 426-32COR. I move that the legal counsel and the clerk number this bill appropriately. It should be Bill Number 1, 8S, right? Eighth Special Session?
Yes.
So that's my first motion.
On that motion, hearing no objections, so ordered.
And thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, my second motion is that we place on the second reading file this bill number that was introduced here in the copies before us, it's Bill Number 426-32, but that would be renumbered accordingly. And so I move that this be placed on the second reading file.
On that motion, objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, I move that legislative concurrence, that consent calendar items, that they all be waived, Item 14 and 15 of this special session agenda.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, on the second reading file, I move then that we resolve in the committee of hold, for the purposes of hearing this bill number, which is an act to repeal and reenact certain sections of public law 32-136, and set salary rates pursuant to the Competitive Wage Act of 2014, and that our Vice Speaker, B.J. Cruz, chair the, in his capacity for the committee on appropriations, that he chair this committee of hold.
On the motion, to resolve in the committee of hold, hearing no objections, so ordered. Okay. We're going to take a brief recess, so that then we'll be able to set it up and invite government officials into the session hall. So we're going to take a brief recess.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I've taken the liberty of asking, and I want to thank the Administration for making available the Director of Administration, the Director of BBMR, and the Director of Revenue and Taxation. And the reason for that, Mr. Chairman, is I want to put a few things on the record to make sure that things are clear. When we, as a legislature, in January decided to exclude the elected officials and the appointed officials from the competitive wage implementation, we did so because we believed that it was imperative that we address our rank-and-file employees first. And so my first question is to the Director of Administration. I would like to have on the record whether or not we have fully implemented the competitive wage for all of the executive branch employees, and whether everybody has received their retroactive pay. Thank you, Madam Director.
Yes, they have.
And as I understand it in the news last week, Department of Education was finally provided with the funds that were necessary to provide them, provide the teachers with their retroactive pay. Is that correct?
Yes.
Are there any government employee, executive branch employees under the Competitive Wage Act who have not received their retroactive and their competitive salary for this year?
Not that I'm aware of, Senator.
Has your office and BBMR provided the University of Guam with all the funds that they need to be able to implement their competitive wage implementation, or are they even in this?
The University of Guam gets their allotments, and we have been giving them. They have not, I'm not aware of any correspondence from them, that they have not been given their allotments of what was supposed to be allotted to them.
Same here. You've done our same. There was a period where the judiciary was concerned about their ability to be able to make the payments of the competitive wage, and over the last seven or eight months, has the Department of Administration and BBMR released them funds sufficient for them to implement the competitive wage implementation in the judiciary?
Yeah, we have given the judiciary their funds.
And are they asking for any retroactive amounts that have not been provided? Are you aware?
No.
Okay. The, I note in the bill that the effective date, you were, you helped assist in writing this, I imagine.
Pardon me?
You helped assist in writing this bill.
Assisted writing?
You assisted in writing this bill.
Oh, sorry.
And the effective date has it going back to January 15th, 2014. Do you have sufficient funds to be able to handle this effective date implementation?
Each agency will take care of their own, and if the funds is not available, it won't be paid. But the authority is there to pay it. We're asking for the authority.
So if a department, well, like, say, Department of Chamor Affairs, I mean, they get a very, very, very small budget. If they're unable to absorb the cost of this because of the size of their budget, you mean to tell me that the governor is going, and you are going to deny their director the increase because?
No, BBMR and Department of Administration will work closely to make sure that everyone is treated equitably. And, you know, there will be that transfer authority that the governor has.
So will then you be retracting your statement that if they don't have enough money, that they won't get paid?
Well, you know, we look at, we look at their funds, and then if there's not sufficient amount, then we will look at other sources.
Do I have your assurance that every director and everybody that's in this proposed bill, by the administration, mind you?
Yes, sir. I guess, Senator.
Will be able to, will get their salary increase? I won't be getting phone calls on Monday?
No, no, you won't be getting that phone call.
That they are not getting paid because they didn't have sufficient funds?
No, you won't get that phone call.
Will there be sufficient funds for the judiciary, the second branch of government, to be able to implement any impact that this legislation may have on them?
My understanding, Senators, the judiciary already received theirs.
And they received even retroactively, and?
They have implemented the plan before everyone else did.
Will there be sufficient funds within the OPA and the Attorney General's Office to include those two elected positions?
There should be.
Are you aware of whether or not the third branch of government, this branch, would be able to implement its? Or are you aware?
I think that the increase is not a big amount that the legislature can work within their budget.
All right. I was approached by an attorney this morning. How many appeals are there before the Civil Service Commission on this Competitive Wage Act currently? Do you know?
I don't have that number, Senator, but we are working on the appeals, and hopefully by January, we will have something out.
The concern that this attorney voiced to me was that he has, he's in opposition to this piece of legislation, because he's concerned that if and when he is able to prevail, if he's able to prevail at the Civil Service Commission, as it relates to all of those individuals who are currently appealing their competitive wage salaries, that there will be sufficient funds to be able to implement whatever Civil Service Commission decides. Has your office kept apprised of what's happening there, and what would happen in the event that there is, are some changes or rulings by the Civil Service Commission?
Well, Senator, you know, at this point in time, we can't project what, how Civil Service is going to decide, and when that time comes, then we will address that issue. We don't even know what that amount's going to be. It's just like any court case, you don't know what the verdict's going to be until it's decided, so we can't, I can't respond to that.
But all government employees have been paid as per the Competitive Wage Act?
That's correct.
We, as a legislature, had other concern, other priorities, and I want to thank Ms. Marie Benito for showing up from the Department of Revenue and I heard the news story this morning that you're going to be releasing an additional 1.5 million for next week. Does that mean that we are current with all the tax refunds? That was also a concern that this legislature had when we did not, I mean, when we withheld the salary increases for the executives and the elected officials.
Yes, that's correct, Senator. All the refunds have been paid, all the A statuses up to October 15.
Thank you. And to BBMR, are there sufficient funds within the budget to be able to sustain these increases, not only for, to pay today, but to carry us through to the end of the fiscal year?
We're very confident, Vice Speaker. We're very confident. We'll work within our resources we have, and we have the due diligence at BBMR. We're going to do our part.
Okay, so I appreciate, I was not the one that prompted you on that one, and you said, "We are very confident." So I wanted to repeat that to the record, that the Director of BBMR says that we are very confident that this is sustainable, and will be, we will be able to carry this through to the end of the fiscal year.
That's right, absolutely.
I believe that I've addressed the concerns that we had in January, unless anybody else can remember. We wanted to make sure that all of the employees were going to get theirs, and they, the testimony from the Director of Administration is that they have, the testimony of the Director of Administration is that all the retroactive pay has been paid, and just within the last month, the Department of Education was made whole, and they were provided with their funds, that the judiciary has been provided with its funds to be able to implement. We will have to figure out our own situation, and that the assurance from the Director of BBMR is that, as he sees the budget, he is very confident that this is sustainable, and that it'd be carried through to the end of the fiscal year with the appropriations that are set forth in the budget. And the Director of, the Acting Director of Revenue and Taxation has advised this body that all tax refunds due up until October the 15th have been released, and that we are compliant with that. The only thing now that you all have to try to figure out are the tax refunds that are, have errors in it, and make those corrections. But I, at least for me, Mr. Chairman, I've satisfied the questions that I had. I know the Speaker is temporarily absent from the room, but I also wanted to state for the record that one of the things that we were concerned as a legislature was to make sure that the private sector employees were going to get their minimum wage increase, and I thank my colleagues for approving the minimum wage increase for the private sector. And I believe we've tried to address everybody, and we now have before us this piece of legislation set forth by the administration. I have no further questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Speaker. Before I recognize Senator Yamashita, and I relinquish the chair back to you, I just want to publicly memorialize a conversation I had quickly with the Director of Administration, thanking her for continuing to release the allotments to the legislature on time. And notwithstanding the action on this bill, I asked her that continued assistance remained, and she said?
Yes.
Okay.
We have always given the legislature their allotment, so I don't think there has been any issues.
Okay, thank you, Directors. Senator Yamashita?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Actually, the Vice Speaker raised what I wanted to raise, and that was those employees who have appealed their pay, and what I heard you saying is that it's, the process is ongoing.
That's correct, Senator.
And do we have a timeframe where we would expect that all of those appeals would have been addressed and responded to?
We are looking at January.
January, okay. Because as you can imagine, we do get the email wondering?
Yes, I get it, too.
Okay. So, but we're on that, and we're making sure?
Yes, yes, the process is ongoing.
Okay. Thank you very much, Madam. Thank you, Mr. Vice Speaker.
Any other Senators wish to? Senator Uggins? Senator Lim Tiaco?
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Speaker, and thank you very much, folks, for joining us this morning. And we did have a sidebar prior to you joining us, and you were able to share some information in regards to the overall impact of the legislation on the executive branch. And I don't know if that question was posed other than a general question, do we have sufficient funds to address this? So can you just share with the body what that number is in terms of implementing it and applying it just to the executive branch?
For the executive, we're looking at about 400,000 for this bill.
For this legislation, retro, and then obviously you deal with the prospective?
Yes.
Compensation. And I think there's a couple of issues that the Vice Speaker brought up in regards to the allotments, in regards to making sure that we took care of the law enforcement first, and that was a commitment of this body back in February, in not entertaining this legislation, is taking care and getting that certainty that the law enforcement compensation was not only going to be implemented, but it was sustainable. And then also our Competitive Wage Act compensation for classified employees, that that was also going to be paid and sustainable moving forward. So now we've come to this particular issue in terms of properly compensating our executives within the government of Guam. And I certainly appreciate the governor stepping forward and coming back and revisiting this, but I just want to share just a particular perspective. You know, the last year and a half, I've had the wonderful opportunity of establishing some good working relationships with executives within the administration. And we've been able to work cooperatively with regards to certain issues as it applies to my oversight. And I think that as I look at this measure, and I say, okay, we're going to, we're going to act on adopting a measure that will properly compensate these executives, inclusive of the elected officials, and I look in particular at the directors and the deputy directors, and I look at the investment that the people of Guam would be putting forward by virtue of adopting this. And the message I want to impart is to all the directors and all the deputies is that that same cooperation that you've been able to extend to my office, I certainly hope will be extended to the people of Guam and to our constituents out there. Because as I look at this, it's additional compensation, which results in, supposed to result in greater responsibility, in terms of being able to continue to address the concerns of the respective departments and agencies. And I'll close with these two words, because in addition to that greater responsibility component, is making sure that our directors and our leadership are accessible to our people, and that they are actionable, as a result of discussions with some of our constituents out there, because we're going to continue to receive concerns, we're going to continue to receive issues, but the same cooperation that was extended and has been extended to my office needs to be extended to our people out there as a result of the responsibilities of the directors, but most importantly, as a result of the people of Guam looking at investing additional resources to increase the compensation of these individuals. So that's what I'd like to share with our executives out there in the administration, is please extend that cooperation even more, because once this legislation is adopted, then we need to continue to maintain accessibility and results for our people in terms of servicing, providing that service to our community. So, Mr. Vice Speaker, I wanted to close with that, and I appreciate your response in terms of whether, in fact, the legislature has sufficient response, I mean, funds. I think the Chairman of Rules did not nod in a negative manner, so I anticipate that hopefully he'll be able to identify the resources internally. So thank you very much, and please share that comment with the executives, the cabinet members, because I think it's very important that we continue to serve our community the way we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
Senator Tiaco?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick question in response to the answers regarding how much it's going to cost, and the retroactive pay that we've been discussing with the Vice Speaker's questions. Part of that component of payroll are the contributions to the retirement fund.
That's correct.
And so, so is that number that you had mentioned, is that inclusive of the government's contribution to that?
Yes.
Okay. And just to build on that, what is the status of the unfunded liability portion of the retirement fund that the government is still contributing to?
It's about a little over $1 billion.
$1 billion?
Yes.
Okay. But the section, or the components of that retirement fund contribution that encompass this bill are inclusive of the number that you had stated?
Yes, yes. We are current with our retirement fund contribution that needs to be remitted to the retirement fund.
Okay. And the impact that it would have going forward? And the impact that it would have going forward takes into consideration that contribution requirement as well?
That's correct.
Okay. And, and just to reiterate, you pegged the number of the unfunded liability at $1 billion, right?
Over $1 billion.
Over $1 billion, okay. Thank you.
It's about $1.2 billion.
$1.2 billion of unfunded liability.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other senator wish to be heard? Any other senator wish to be heard? I don't see any hands go up. I guess this committee of the whole, oh wait, go ahead, Senator Uggan.
I apologize. Would it be proper, Mr. Chairman, if I proffer an amendment at this time or did you want to dismiss the guest?
We can, unless we have any more questions of them.
This would not affect the?
Then, so why don't we excuse them because as you put it, they should be back doing their work so that they can, they can give me my reports.
We're working on it, Senator.
So.
Happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
All right. Why don't we go ahead then? You had an amendment that you wanted to proffer, Senator Uggan.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Vice Speaker, what is being circulated here? I just wanted to make sure that you, you do have a copy in your hands, Mr. Vice Speaker. What is being circulated, colleagues, is a provision that has been requested by the judiciary to ensure that there's no complications in implementing the intent of this particular proposal as it applies to judicial officers. So, the amendment that I would like to proffer is a new section that would read, "Nowwithstanding any other provision of law, the judiciary of Guam is hereby authorized to expend its appropriations for salary increases for judicial officers pursuant to subsection 5102 D. of Chapter 5, Title VII Guam Code Annotated." And I believe it's very straightforward, so, Mr. Speaker, I'd like to proffer that amendment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. On the Uggan Amendment regarding the judiciary, Senator Limtiaco?
Just a question, if the, the author of the amendment would yield, is there, can you provide just some clarification as to whether or not this language requires additional appropriations or it's just existing appropriations?
Please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Senator, for that question. If you notice, the language would provide the authorization but no funding mechanism based on initial discussions with representatives from judiciary, funding. They would have to identify the funds internally. So in response to any requirement for additional funds, my response to you on this amendment is no.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions? Any, okay, on, on the Uggan, on the, go ahead, Madam Speaker.
Just, I know because it says Section 10, and, but Section 10 of what? Because we have only five sections in this bill.
Why don't we have legal counsel number it appropriately? So it would probably be before, yeah.
Yes, so that, so that motion then is to allow then legal counsel then is to, you know, to make the?
Insert it appropriately and number it.
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else on the Uggan Amendment? Any objection to the Uggan Amendment? The Uggan Amendment is passed. Any other amendments to the bill? Senator Limtiaco?
Mr. Chair, just as a course of question regarding the proceedings, are we to, are we going to come out of the Committee of the Whole and go into deliberation on the bill? Or is this the time to make amendments and?
This is the time to make the amendments if you wish to make any.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, just, you know, in reviewing the bill, you know, we, we can see that the structure and the intent of the bill is to establish parity among the, those that were left out of the initial HEPA increase that we had passed back in March. And Section 1 refers to salary increases for Imagalahin Guahan, Segundo Namagalahin, Senators of Ilaslaturen Guahan, and the Attorney General of Guam. And then Section 2 speaks of Imagalahin Guahan's appointed cabinet members shall be set to the respective salary rates pursuant to the Competitive Wage Act as well. And it goes on to cite as well as the Chief of Police and the Fire Chief. Section 3 repeals Public Law 32136. And Section 4 and 5 are technical sections regarding the effective date and severability clause. And, Mr. Chair, this body as well as our constituents know, where I have stood this entire time on pay raises for our elected officials and we just rose out of the Committee of the Whole and identified a $1.2 billion liability, unfunded liability for our retirement fund. We can go through the list and, and go through all the various debt services that our government owes in the form of bonds and, and we have to commend the administration for getting the finances in order for the government as well as this body for doing what they can to appropriate responsibly. And for the last four years, we've seen a, a much better management of our government. That's undeniable. The paying of tax refunds, making good on a lot of these debts that we owed in the form of retroactive pay and the establishment of the HEPA increases for those that are involved in the daily operation of our government. So I, I don't disagree with the Section 2 of the bill which looks to increase the salaries of the cabinet members because they too are involved in the daily operation of running this government and for the most part are the key members that have helped this administration manage the finances of our government very well in the last four years. And, you know, I do not disagree with Section 2 of the bill. But I have always disagreed with and will continue to disagree with Section 1 of the bill. And it goes back to this, this notion that what we do in this body, what our elected officials do is for the greater good of our, of our island. It's a public service, not a job, not, not a career path. And it takes, it takes a special person to run for these offices because it's very difficult to run for office and to get elected. And the reward is not necessarily in the salaries that are paid out to any of these officials. The reward is in knowing that you have contributed to the progress of our island, you have made a difference in the families that call Guam home, you have made a difference in all the facets that help our island be what we all call as home and, and that we want to perpetuate living in a great home which is Guam and our island. But when we constantly come back to this, this notion that we should get paid, these elect, our elected officials should get paid in, in the form of parity to the Directors or anybody else at you would otherwise, you know, relate that position, I disagree. I've always disagreed with it and I believe that our constituents disagree with it. And to have this section in the bill, I object. I object to it. And so when we talk about what it's attempting to do, I don't think anybody in this body disagrees with Section 2. The cabinet members should get paid. They're the ones that are directly responsible for managing the agencies we appropriate the money for so that they could effectively manage the public services that are provided for those agencies. They should get paid. Section 2 should remain in this bill. Section 1, however, should not. And therefore my amendment is to strike out the entire Section 1 of this legislation.
Thank you very much, Senator Limtiaco. Senator Limtiaco has proffered an amendment to strike Section 1. There is an objection. Anyone wish to be heard on the Limtiaco Amendment? There has been an objection. All those in favor of the Limtiaco Amendment, please indicate by raising your hand. The amendment fails.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Do you have a second? Do you have a second amendment?
Yes, I do.
Okay, please.
Mr. Chair, therefore, based on the, the outcome of that section, I'd like to proffer a different amendment and would strike out the section that refers to Senators of Ilaslaturen Guahan. So the amendment would be to strike out Section 1, line 3, or excuse me, line 6, page 1, line 6 of Section 1, the words Senators of Ilaslaturen Guahan.
Senator Limtiaco has made a profit, a proffered an amendment to strike the words Senators of Ilaslaturen Guahan. Anyone wish to be heard? There's been an objection. All those in favor of the Limtiaco Amendment, please indicate by raising your hand. Motion fails. Senator Limtiaco?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, you know, in examining the bill further and looking to the attachment that's on Exhibit A that identifies all the cabinet members and their respective agencies, you know, I read down the line and I, I see agencies such as GMH, I see agencies such as GPD, agencies such as Department of Education. You know, and I, and I think back, I'm like, what, what in addition to these cabinet members and the administration staff, which we've recognized and we've already implemented the HEPA raises for those that are under these directors, and I look back and I think, wow, these are the people that are directly responsible for the operations of the government. And I, I, I think back to who else would be responsible in some sort of fashion on these agencies? And then you think about the Education Board, the Board of Education, you think about those board members, you think about those that serve on our parole board, those that serve on all the different agency boards that otherwise make a contribution to this community and do so sometimes without any pay at all or with very, very low stipends. Aren't they too contributing to the government? And so we would otherwise recognize all those listed in Section 1 before we list, we, we put those stipends and take those stipends into consideration and what these people on these boards do to help our government run? We would, we would first put all those elected officials in Section 1 ahead of those that sometimes do it for nothing, for no money at all, to spend hours going through and trying to attempt to make our island better and we do nothing to recognize it. Yet we would have objections to that Section 1 that would otherwise put our elected officials in front of those people, the very constituents that we go to every two years to ask for their vote, saying that we're going to do this to make our island better. And yet when the opportunity arises and the finances arises to do it, we don't. And, and that, Mr. Chair, is the objection. It's not necessarily whether these elected officials deserve it, it's whether we're properly managing our constituents' tax dollars and whether we're putting those priorities that many of you got elected in here to do and which I got elected as well in the 32nd to prioritize, yet we don't take advantage of that opportunity. And that is what the true objection, the underlying objection is regarding this bill as well as Section 1. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator. Any other senator wish to be heard on the bill? Any other senator wish to be heard on the bill? Any other amendments being proffered on the bill? If not, Mr. Majority Leader? There was only one amendment by Senator Uggan.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair and colleagues. Mr. Chair, at this time I move that we rise from the Committee of the Whole with any amendments that were made and adopted while in the Committee of the Whole remaining intact and that the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole is to pass Bill 1-8S.
Any objection? There is an objection. All those in favor of rising from the Committee of the Whole with other Hall with a recommendation to do, to pass, please indicate by raising your hand. Motion to rise has been approved. Thank you.[1555.71]
The legislature's back in session. Is, um, okay, because I, no, I saw the Vice Speaker standing up earlier. Okay, so... Mr. Vice Speaker.
Madam Speaker. Thank you very much. The Committee of the Whole has risen, um, and is reporting Bill 1-8-S as amended by, in the Committee of the Whole, to the, um, to the body with the recommendation to do pass.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered. We're now in the, um, voting file. I'm going to ask the clerks to please read the title.
Bill Number 1-8-S, as amended in the Committee of the Whole, by the request of Imagalahin Guahan, the Governor of Guam, in accordance with the Organic Act of Guam, an act to repeal and reenact certain sections of Public Law 32-136 and set salary rates pursuant to the Competitive Wage Act of 2014.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, excused. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Limtiaco. Senator Limtiaco, nay. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Rispicio. Senator Rispicio, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, excused. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, excused. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye.
Senator Rispicio, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that we adjourn this special session. Senadai.
On that motion, hearing no objections, we are adjourned. Senadai.